Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to the regular meeting of the Chicabe School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting on channel 191 and also on Vimeo. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, and we'll observe that for all those who serve in the military and for all of those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, could we have a rule call for attendance, please? Thank you.
Mayor View.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Barcello. Mr. DePaula. Mrs. Perret. Mrs. Schofield. Mr. Shumsky.
Here.
Mr. Lamath.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Present.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mrs. Lopes.
Present.
Mr. Zatella.
Yes.
Eight present, four absent.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll go to public announcements by committee members, and we'll start to my left.
All set.
All set. Don?
All set.
Sam?
I just have a few things. One, I want to hope, or wish everyone's hoping that they're having a great summer. And I also want to highlight that in this year's school committee budget, we approved $150,000 dedicated to STEAM labs at our elementary school, so everyone that does not have a STEAM lab will be getting one this year. And I also want to thank Westover Air Force Reserve Base today for an excellent tour, and Mayor View's office for organizing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chet?
All set.
We'll go to my right. Doug?
Sitting there.
Tim? Ron?
All set.
So I just wanted to take a quick moment before we go to the superintendent and let you know that we are making progress with our superintendent's search. Right now, we're putting together the committee, and the committee I am going to share with you will consist of, frankly, members of our community, members of our district, and I'll go through a quick list of some of those categories. Included in the committee will be myself as mayor of the city, our school committee vice chair, Susan Zatella, the CEA president. We've offered Laura Demakis a seat at the table for that search committee. I know that Laura is here. And we will also be opening up to lottery for positions for other seats at the table, and we'll have two administrators, central office principals, vice principals, and others, two staff, teachers, paras, custodians, clerks, food service, et cetera, two parents, two community representatives, whether they be business, public safety, higher education representatives, or other community groups or members. And if you are interested in serving on this search committee, please send a letter of interest. That letter of interest will be out in circulation on social media and also in the local periodicals. And also, oh, three school committee members. Sorry, thank you. Three additional school committee members, I forgot that one, which is on the top of my list.
Mr. Wagner, his hand up, excuse me.
And I'm sorry, just let me go through that. Superintendent's search with no spaces at cpsge.org is where you would send your letter of interest, and all of those letters must be received by August 10th by 4:00 p.m. So again, we'll be trying to get that out throughout the entire community, and certainly hiring a new superintendent is very important, and we want to make sure we do it right. And we are also taking guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Tim?
Respectfully, who was in charge of putting together the list of who would be decided and how this would be picked? Because as far as I'm aware, this wasn't put before the school committee.
No, we are going to be doing that as a lottery, and I will be putting the committee together. So anyone who's interested in those categories, please, we'd love to have you at the table. So for example, Tim, if we only have three members of the school committee who are interested, and you're one of them, you'd be picked. If more than three members of the school committee choose to be on the committee, we are going to limit it to three.
It's not necessarily about whether I want to be on the search committee. I'm not sure I do at this time, but it wasn't put before the board. That's my main concern. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I have a question on it. This committee is just to pick the finalists. The finalists will then be turned over to the school committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, we will not, the search committee will not be picking the superintendent. They will be bringing the finalists to the school committee, who ultimately will make that decision.
I know.
Thank you for pointing that out, Don. And...
Mayor, Ron has a question.
Sure, Ron.
I just wanted to clarify. His question earlier is, so the three people that are left to get selected from this group here, how would they get selected again? So we said, say there's five of us.
A lottery, Ron. It'll be five total. Myself, Susan, and three members of this board.
Okay, so say...
Just on the search committee.
Okay, say six of us put our name in for the search committee, how do you select that down to three?
A lottery. Three will be chosen.
Lottery.
August 18th meeting.
Yes, sir.
So it wouldn't be by someone, you know, maybe you got some kind of experience in things like this?
Uh, no.
Just like you're just going to pick it out of a hat?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that that would make sense when we're having an important search like this.
What's that?
I don't think that makes sense when we're having an important search like this. Just picking out of a hat.
Okay, well, that's the process...
I think some qualification should go into that.
That's the process that we, and again, I'm just sharing it with the public. I didn't know we were going to open it up for discussion, but that's what we're doing. That's the process we're doing for the search committee. If you're interested, please put your name in.
Oh, I am, but I just wanted to know what the process was and how that process gets determined.
I believe the fairest way would be by a lottery. So I'm not going to pick and choose a member of the school committee over each other.
August 18th meeting is the lottery pick.
August 18th will be the lottery pick for any category that has more than what's been mentioned. I think we have a very diverse, large group representing every facet of the city of Chicabe, and I'm hopeful that we get some, hopefully, great response. If it doesn't work, I will backfill positions, okay?
Yeah, I just, I respect the decision, but I don't agree with it, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Put a letter of interest in.
Do I have any announcements?
No announcements.
Can I?
Yes, Susan.
We're hoping to get a large level of enthusiasm for the superintendent's search committee. We're hoping to have a lot of people from the public submitting a letter of interest to a specified email address that's been created, and we do have a flyer that we're going to be sending around that Mrs. Hor got ready for us. Sarah did a great job, along with Becky. So we're handling this in the most professional way we can.
Thank you, and I believe that was our goal, is to make sure that everyone has a voice. And I, maybe I didn't come across that way, but the intent is to create a committee where everyone has a voice, and that's ideally what we're trying to do. And you have to limit it to a certain number of people, otherwise you have too many people on the committee in getting them all together. So we feel that this is a large enough group, and hopefully we'll meet the expectations of the school board and our district as we move forward in the process. So I hope that helps.
Mayor, that's very similar to what we did in the past.
And it's very similar to what we've done in the past.
It is.
Thank you, Don. Anything else? I know that we wanted to get a, oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent, you're all set for your public announcement. Public input, we can get into public input now. Public input, please. Speakers, identify yourselves with your name and address. Public input sessions have a total of 30 minutes or three minutes for individual speakers. Speakers will be chosen on a first come, and I have a list here in front of me, and it should be related to school subject matter. Character assassinations and derogatory attacks will not be tolerated, and questions asked by the public by referring to the committee or administrative staff will be considered at a later time for response. At this time, up for public input, I have Scott Chapdline.
Scott Chapdline, 47 Wall Street.
Irene Lemieux, 151 Mayflower.
Angela Tanguay, 55 Casino Avenue.
Diane Metris, 88 Remen Avenue.
Welcome, everyone, to City Hall.
We're just here to thank you guys for the Anne Marie Lizwell Library dedication. Bobby wanted to be here tonight, Anne Marie's husband, but he couldn't be here because he just had back surgery. He's very happy that you guys are doing this and that you, we went through all the channels and everything happened.
I just want to thank you. Anne Marie loved school, she loved teaching, she loved the library, getting kids to read, so I thought it quite appropriate that she be a recipient of having her name on the library because she did such a great job in education.
Thank you. Thank you. It's our honor and privilege to memorialize Anne Marie Lizwell, and hopefully the rest of the members of the school committee agree with me. Thank you. Next up for public input, we have Laura Demakis.
My name is Laura Demakis. I am the Chicabe Education Association president, and I live at 51 Westbrook Road in South Hadley. And I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for part-time release, and I know many of you weren't on the school committee when they voted for it before, so I just want to kind of run down what that looks like. So I get, I still have my prep during school as I need because I still teach, and I think that's really important because it's what allows me to bring to the administration when I have to deal with things, a bird's eye view of what's going on in the classroom, especially with this past year. So I really only, that part-time release is really only two hours a day that I'm, that I'm asking for. The rest I spend on my prep and planning. Sometimes I do miss my planning to allow for meetings. If I don't have that part-time release, it means that I have to have my meetings in the afternoon with administration, and that's very tough because that's when I have to meet with my members because they're all working in the morning. So that's one really big part. Also, the whole point of that, and I know Mr. Lamath, you'll appreciate this, as I've said it before, is the grievances. And I know that's one of Mr. Lamath's concerns, but honestly, I have found that the more I'm meeting with administration, and I meet with all of them, everyone from Dr. Stolar to Superintendent Morton has met with me weekly, as Superintendent Clark did before, Assistant Superintendent Francis, everyone up there at Dulong, even Becky Bouchard I meet with, it's a constant conversation. And this year, with all the different type of behaviors and learning or not learning that's gone on, I think it has been imperative. And I think the new culture and the current culture that I've worked really hard on about collaboration with each other is more important than ever. I can bring to you, the school committee and the administration, the voices of my members, of all four units, because I hear them from all the different buildings, from boots on the ground, from the tiniest little thing to the biggest thing, and then we can work collaboratively on a solution that makes sense, but that's also within the confines of the contract. Going back to the grievances, since Mr. Morton's taken over and we've really tried to establish together with the administration and the CEA a collaborative culture, we haven't had a grievance because we go to them in a conversation, and instead, we've had really great conversations that are eye-opening for both sides, and we can come to a conclusion and a resolution that upholds the contract but also does what they need to do. And frankly, in this moment in time, when the students and the learning is so very different than it was pre-COVID, we need that to happen because there are things happening that never happened before, experiences that no one's experienced before, admin, or teachers, or paras, or clerks, or anyone in Unit B. So I ask that you consider it, my part-time release. I do want you to just know that the MTA, the CEA is the fifth largest in the MTA locals, and we are the only one of two that doesn't have even a full-time release president. Every, all the other large locals do. So I'm not asking for that because I really think it's important for me to be in the classroom, but I would really hope you consider because we've come a long way, and I love the culture we've created together, and I think it's really important. So thank you.
Next up is Ira Lemieux. All set. And next up is David Rossi.
Hello, everyone.
David Rossi.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome, David.
My name is David Rossi. I reside at 106 Moro Drive, and that's one of the main access roads to Litwin School in the Litwin School neighborhood. I'm a proud alumni of Litwin School, I'm a proud alumni of Bellamy, and I'm also a proud alumni of Chicabe High. Over the years, we've been battling a serious speeding and security issue for our students in the Litwin School neighborhood. Over the years, we've seen motorists that are excessively speeding on our side streets that go to Litwin Lane. We see them going by our flashing red school buses that are letting students on and off, and we also see them totally ignoring four-way stop signs on Litwin Lane and Moro Drive, as well as that of Litwin Lane and Carpenter Drive. Last year, last May, as the protocols for COVID were being released, the neighborhood signed a petition of 120 residents asking for the city's help in getting some security measures established on these neighborhood, on these school neighborhood streets to protect our schoolchildren as they travel to and from school. I want to keep it brief. With that being said, the thing is, is, you know, looking back on things, the thing is that I never used to wear a helmet as I was a kid riding a bicycle. You know, that was a thing. And today, the thing is, is we have to have our kids wear bicycle helmets because the thing is, is it's a, it's a safety protection for them. Whether it's popular or unpopular, the thing is, is it's the right thing to do. And so I'm asking your support on an item agenda tonight, it's, I believe, on the end of looking at measures in which we can increase the security, the security for our students traveling to and from Litwin School, as that of our residents, and just putting these measures in and around our school zone here at Litwin so that the kids, you know, they can go back and forth, and they can go to the field, and they can play again, and not be worried about getting run down, or getting off the bus and being afraid of getting hit. You know, we've seen enough, we've been working with our mayor, and mayor, my greatest appreciation to you, your platform on safety, as well as your personal commitment to that and to the neighborhood, has been something that has given us great hope, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I also want to give that thanks to our vice president of the school committee, our distinguished Mr. Zatella at large, and that of Sam Shumsky. I've spoken to these members, I've reached out to our officials in seeking solutions, and I'm coming to this committee tonight just to seek your help and your solutions in getting just some safety measures put in place in and around the Litwin School area, our school streets, so that we can just make sure that our kids are safe in that of our residents. So with that, I just want to thank you for all your effort, and please feel free to contact me with anything I can help you with. Thank you.
Thank you, David. That concludes public input. We have visitors.
So I'd like to ask Ms. Stephanie Shaw, Director of Chicabe Veteran Services, to come up to the, to microphone, along with Mr. Paul Mercier to join us over at the microphone at the podium.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's always an honor and a privilege to be a part of programs and ceremonies such as this. The Chicabe Department of Veteran Services is always honored to recognize individuals who choose to serve our country, and we attend our city's graduations annually to present students with an award for making the commitment to serve our country while still attending to their academics and enlist prior to graduating. Tonight, we pay special tribute to a gentleman who answered the nation's call well before that particular culmination. Mr. Mercier deserves such recognition and respect for choosing selfless service, and at such a young age, seeing the greater cause, he ran to meet the fight so far from home. On this day, I see you here tonight, Paul Mercier. Please hear me when I say how proud I am to meet you and to support you and to honor you. This veteran is being awarded a Graduates to Guardians Challenge Coin depicting the city's seal on one side and his branch of service, in this case, the Marine Corps emblem, on the other. Challenge coins have a long tradition in the history of the military, being given only when extraordinary efforts, sacrifice, and selfless service are displayed, and they are exchanged by virtue of a handshake. The city of Chicabe is proud of our sailors, soldiers, marines, and airmen, and we want them to know that their sacrifice, sacrifices do not go unnoticed. Mr. Mercier, please come to the front of the podium. One of my favorite Vietnam veterans, Mr. Jim Healy, would present you with this coin on my behalf.
Long overdue.
Thank you.
Welcome home. We also have lovely party gifts for you.
All right, thank you.
Chapter 111 Vietnam Veterans of America. There's also a membership application inside.
And a certificate signed by myself and the mayor honoring your commitment as a student
to serve your country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to further along the ceremony, in 1964, Mr. Paul Mercier, a 17-year-old student at Chicabe Comprehensive High School, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. After four years of service, Mr. Mercier was honored to be discharged, being awarded Vietnamese Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, and M-14 Rifle Marksmanship. On behalf of Chicabe Public School Committee, and in accordance with Chapter 130 Acts of 2005, signed into law by Governor Romney, I'm proud to present Mr. Paul Mercier a 2022 Chicabe Comprehensive High School diploma. I want to thank you for your service to this country, to the city of Chicabe, and to, to all the other, all the people in Chicabe Public Schools, and I want to, you know, congratulate you on being a graduate and also an alumni now of Chicabe Comprehensive High School.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
You didn't want that diploma from Chicabe High?
No, no, he did not. No, he did not.
You have to ask. Hey. Nope.
You want to make a motion to take something out of order?
Thanks.
Congratulations again, Paul. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it. We have a motion to take one of our items out of order?
Yes, please, if I, we could please take item, agenda item number 22-7-23 out of order for discussion?
23 or 26?
Oh, excuse me. 22-7-26, please.
So the motion is to take out of order? Any discussion on taking out of order? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So 22-7-26. New business. Want to read it?
Oh, 22-7-26, traffic at Moro Drive, Litwin School, and Sunshine Village.
Yes. Who wants to take the lead?
You want to?
Mr. Shumsky.
Mr. Shumsky.
All right. So at our Ward 6 neighborhood meeting, Mr. Rossi came and spoke on behalf of the residents that live on Moro Drive and addressed his concerns and the neighbors' concerns on traffic issues regarding speeding. And we, since then, we have been in contact with the mayor, Chief of Staff Mike Pease, Council Committee at Large, Sue Lopes, Chet Zatella, or Committee at Large, and myself, and we have been working to find solutions to the problem. And in the email that you wrote to us, I have some quotes I'd like to read, and he, and I quote, "Understandably with Litwin School in our backyards, the Litwin Athletic Field and Sunshine Village right next door, we have a heavy saturation of young children, handicapped children, and adults, and elderly residents in our neighborhood. Also, two full-time daycares operating that take their toddlers out in their strollers and wagons during the day." It was stressed that safety is the number one concern of the area and of the residents. He also said, to be clear, that this is not a Burnett Road traffic problem. This is a safety issue on Moro Drive and all of the small access streets leading to Litwin Lane. Residents' deepest safety concerns exist as a result of reckless speeding motorists on our small Litwin neighborhood streets. And we have one solution that we think might work, and that is establishing a school zone that would empower our hard-working police department and officers with the tools necessary to issue citations to those unlawful motorists that operate recklessly within our Litwin Elementary School Zone. So I would like to make the motion that we ask the state to conduct a traffic study that will hopefully conclude that Moro Drive and Oko Circle can be deemed a 20 mile per hour school zone.
So we have a motion. On that motion, discussion. Don?
I'm not opposed to the motion, but I have a question on the motion. If the traffic report goes back that we can expand the school zone, is that something that has to be done by the city council? Do we just make a recommendation then to the city council? How's it going to work?
So I can say that they're exploring, we've already had, if I may, if it's the will of the committee, we've had open conversations with Mass DOT, and we're already talking about what the solutions may be, talked about traffic studies, and frankly, using our own PE. So we have professional engineers that work for the city of Chicabe that will be doing some of this research for us to figure out how we can proceed. So that motion is wonderful. I actually don't know the process, or I'd share it with you, on how to create a school zone. It hasn't happened in Chicabe in a very long time, and I don't want to make it up. So we're looking at expanding a current school zone, and I think this is a very viable option to hopefully resolve an issue of public safety.
I would also like to add that President, City Council President Frank Laflamme, I have, reached out to him, waiting for a response back for his help, as well as trying to find a solution to this. I also wanted to address that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. So there is a motion. That motion, I don't think, if I may ask, the Law Department, if we have the purview to make that type of motion to order a traffic study as the school committee? So you, actually, the motion is to request a traffic study? Yes. I can let you know that we are looking into tra- I can let you know that we are looking into traffic studies already. So if you want to make it formal, we can take a vote on it.
Yeah.
The only, the only reason why I bring the question up, like I said, I'm not opposed, is in the past when we've had these type, any kind of safety issue, we always sent it to the Public Safety Committee, which is made up of the police chief, the fire chief, and some people from the school department, and they would go through the process of probably getting the study done. I don't know if that's the proper channel or not, but whichever way works, works. That's, I just don't want it to not work.
Well, the ball's already rolling. Okay? So we have a motion to, to look at expanding that school zone. Is that an appropriate motion?
Yeah.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And another motion to take something out of order.
Thank you for entertaining this. Can we please take Item Number 22-7-21 out of order?
So the motion is to take Item 22-7-21 out of order. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So 22-7-21.
Move that the library at Fairview Veterans Memorial Elementary School be named in the memory of Ann Marie Liswell as recommended by the Facilities Subcommittee.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve and motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend. Any discussion, Don?
It came through the Facilities Subcommittee and it came through the Student Council and both, both the recommendations and the favorable, it was unanimous through Facilities.
Any other discussion? We can take a hand vote, motion. So the motion is all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Regular Order of Business? Regular Order of Business, Approval of Minutes 22-7-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on June 15, 2022 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Reports 22-7-2.
Report on Personnel Action. I'd like to mention some retirements. Kimberly Cassie, Paraprofessional Belcher, 20 years of service. Robert, Robin Fortin, Special Ed Paraprofessional, Litwin, 15 years. Frank Fortini, Custodian Chickaby High School, 15 years, 11 months. Claudette Gilman, Special Ed Paraprofessional, Berry, 18 years, 8 months. Judy Slater, Grade Six Teacher, Bellamy, 34 years, 11 months. Thank you all for your service to the Chickaby Public Schools and their students and their families. Thank you.
And I echo those sentiments. Thank you. Sure. Doug?
Thank you. If I could just take a minute to recognize Kim for her years of service and I want to wish her much luck. She's going to be the new director of the Lorraine Soup Kitchen. I know she's a very, very hard worker and I think she's going to do a great job over there. So best of luck, Kim, in your new endeavor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Susan?
In this personnel report, we hired librarians, kindergarten teachers, special ed paraprofessionals, school counselors, STEM robotics teachers, band teachers, physics teachers, math teachers. Really happy to see all those hires.
Thank you.
Very fortunate as a district.
Any other discussion? So that's just a report that we keep on file. We don't need a vote. We'll move on to next item, 22-7-3.
Report on Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee.
Do we need a motion, Sam?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Any discussion? Don first and Tim, you're next.
The library, because the unanimous vote, as I mentioned earlier, we discussed the paperwork for Berry going forward to the state. Paperwork's been submitted, so we're waiting for the state to come back to tell us where we stand. There was some discussion on Stryber's parking lot that stayed in Subcommittee. We're still.
I think you're on facilities.
No, we're on policy, not facilities.
We're on the Report of Policy and Human Resources.
Then I stand corrected.
Sorry. Tim?
It's all right. So the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee met late last month.
Tim looked at me like I was nuts, so I apparently picked the wrong guy. Go ahead, Tim.
All right. We met and discussed a number of items. First was the Approval of Minutes. Our second item was discussion of student involvement and decision-making. So that was basically how we can get more students involved with the Student Advisory Committee, which for those who don't know, is the board that is made up of students that comes and discusses issues with us. Obviously, over the course of the pandemic, you know, barring myself, it's been a little bit difficult to get people involved. So we just discussed with building admins, basically ways that we can get the students more involved in that. Then we moved on to the Version of the Policy Manual, which is basically a standard updating of policies to be more in line with the Mass Association of School Committee's sample policy recommendations. So we'll be taking our first reading of those tonight. And then I don't think that anything else was discussed, barring that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Policy and Human Resource Subcommittee, the report? We'll move on to 22-7-4.
Report on Facilities Subcommittee. Don, Lamath.
Motion to receive. As I started before, we voted unanimously on the library being named for Mrs. Liswell. We talked about Berry. The paperwork's been submitted to the state. We're waiting on paperwork to come back. We probably won't see that till, wow, September or later. We talked about Stryber's parking lot. There's, there's some issues with parking up there that, you know, it's probably similar to a lot of our elementary schools. More people are picking their kids up and dropping them off than in the past, so we're having more traffic. So it's clogging up the parking lot. So. Scott's been looking into that. And Scott gave us an update of what he's doing on summer projects and he also gave us a report on what he's doing for the warehouse. The summer projects, some of them include air conditioning, and we've asked Scott to go out and look at possibly using somebody else's money to get it done quicker, hiring an outside firm. He was going to look into that. I guess he's been requested to do that also for the bigger areas, the gyms, the, so he's in the process of looking for that. That's, that's my report.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the report? We'll move on to new business, 22-7-5.
Move that the bills warrant S-061722 totaling $1,046,708.18 be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chet, do you want to read the warrants into the record?
Certainly. There are four warrants to be acted upon, submitted by Director of the Budget and Finance, John Marakki. That's what we'll go into business to do. Under athletics, there was accumulation of bills of $18,479. For food services, $207,289. General expenses, $576,552. Kelly Services, $16,765. Telecommunications, $14,351. Utilities, $207,215. Sales tax, $716. The total of those four warrants come to $4,019,508. We're being asked to act upon those individually.
Any discussion? So we'll be voting on the first warrant, that's S-061722, for $1,046,708. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-6.
Move that the bills warrant S-062422 totaling $783,852.99 be approved.
Chet, can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the second warrant? Roll call, Sarah?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-7.
Move that the bills warrant S-070822 totaling $1,568,413.82 be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-9.
Move that the use of prior year's funds totaling $1,250,000 to the balance of the fiscal year 2023 budget be approved.
Tim, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-10.
Move that the revised fiscal year 2023 budget totaling $103,563,451 be approved.
Ron, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, this $103 million budget, when we add in the 1.25, doesn't it bring it back up to the 1.4 that we originally approved?
Correct.
So why are we approving a smaller budget?
Because that's the one the city council, that's the amount of money they allotted to us and they approved 103.
Okay. I guess I'll cut that out.
Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-11.
Move that the following memorandums of agreement between the Chickaby School Committee and United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1459 Technical Unit be approved. A, minimum agreement July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and minimum memorandum of agreement, one-time payment for active employees.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? From anyone? So this is a, a contract, so a financial contract will take a, Don, you have a?
I just wanted to mention, it's a, it's a union for one person at this time.
Okay. Yep, it's an amendment. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-12.
Substitute teacher paraprofessional program. Move that the following job descriptions be approved. A, substitute teacher, building the son. B, substitute teacher, day-to-day. C, substitute teacher, long-term. D, substitute paraprofessional floater. And E, substitute paraprofessional, day-to-day.
So we move that, if I may, the last line, move that the terms?
Oh, move that the terms of employment for substitute teachers and paraprofessionals be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? I didn't?
I don't think. I think seven we did, but not eight. But anyway.
Get a motion?
Motion to approve, now, on the motion. We had a contract with Kelly. Is that now complete? We had a, we're moving to terms of employment for substitute teachers and paraprofessionals. We had a contract with Kelly. Is that contract now null and void or complete?
Correct. So that contract will be over for the upcoming school year because the fill rate was nine percent.
We're not approving two different rates?
Correct. We would no longer use Kelly.
Okay.
Ron, all set? I saw your hand up. Anyone else? Any further discussion? So we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yep. We can do it all in favor on this one? Roll call. Salaries, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Apparently I missed one of our warrants, so we did four of them tonight and traditionally we don't have that many. And apparently I missed 22-7-8. Chet had read the cumulative amount, so we'll do 22-7-8, the fourth warrant.
Move that the bills warrant S-071522 totaling $620,532.96 be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries, 22-7-13.
Move that the terms of employment for non-union cycle personnel, Cycle Three, be approved.
Chet, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, that's terms of employment for non-union personnel. We'll take a roll call. Take a roll call. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 22-7-14.
Move that the employment contract between the Chicopee School Committee and Alvin W. Morton, the first Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Don?
This contract, so that when the time comes, if we approve a new superintendent, Mr. Morton has a contract effect to go back to, if it's not the candidate that's chosen.
If I apply.
If you apply, whatever. But I'm just...
Don, did you say something? Any other discussion? Tim?
Yeah, I agree with extending this contract tonight. You know, it's rare for school districts now to be keeping people in such high leadership positions. So I know we've had Matt for a while. I know we've had Alvin for a while, and I think they've been doing a pretty good job. So I think it's worth keeping him on for as long as we can.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other kind words for Alvin?
Good luck.
Good luck. Have a good luck.
It's not to pay you for two jobs, Alvin.
I know. I got it.
Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. 22-7-15.
Move that the contract between the Chicopee Public Schools and David Godsagan, M.D., school physician, be approved.
Tim, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 22-7-16.
Move that the payment of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee's annual dues totaling $7,700 from the School Committee expense account be approved.
Ron, motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 22-7-17.
Move that the proposed increases for second breakfasts and lunches be approved as listed.
Susan?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Since it does include the increased price for school lunch, we will take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 22-7-18.
Move that the following job descriptions be approved. A. Assistant teacher. B. Assistant teacher college and career center. And C. Instructional coach.
Motion to approve.
Don, motion to approve. Any discussion?
This is just to upgrade our positions. We've been going through them on a regular basis.
Sorry, upgrading our job descriptions and...
We're updating all our job descriptions. We're going through them one at a time, and this is the next batch.
Thank you. Any further discussion? These are job descriptions, and I'm going to do all in favor. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 22-7-19.
Move that the second reading of the following policies be approved as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A. School committee organization meeting, B7. B. Subcommittees of the School Committee, B9. C. Teaching about controversial issues. Last controversial speakers, I36. And D. Student dress code policy, J19.
Sam, motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, the final and second reading. Tim, on the second reading.
Can we add a friendly amendment to documents B7 and B9 and have them apply retroactive to this term?
Oh, you wanted to make this motion. It's all right. Thank you for the amendment. Yes. We apologize. So that's a friendly amendment to be retroactive to the beginning of this...
Yeah.
For clarity, term means...
Updated in this policy the term of office for the School Committee members, so after the municipal election, after the swearing-in.
Yep.
That would change the term of office from one year to two years, so we don't have to do an annual election every year.
Any other discussion? Do we need a roll call, somebody?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
22-7-20.
Move that the first reading of the following policies be approved as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A. Student policy goals, J1. B. Students' rights and responsibilities, J16. C. Student conduct on school buses, J20. D. Student publication, J21. E. Gang activities slash secret societies, J22. F. Bullying prevention policy, J24. G. Teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, J26. H. Co-curricular and extracurricular activities, J29. I. Community-sponsored contests for students, J33. J. Student activity/transportation policy, J36. K. Pregnant students, J53. L. Do not resuscitate orders policy, J55. And M. Student publicity policy, J60.
Can I get a motion, Chet?
Motion to approve.
So the motion on the first reading is to approve and send to the Human Resource Subcommittee, Policy and Human Resource Subcommittee. There'll be no discussion, so all in favor. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We already did...
Roll call to send to Subcommittee.
Didn't we already send these to Subcommittee?
It's to approve the first reading.
Yeah, why does it say... Is it written there? Should be a second reading? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. We've already done 22-7-21, 22-7-22.
Move that any member of the School Committee wishing to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Committee/Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Joint Conference, number 2nd through 5th, 2022, be authorized to do so.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a financial order to send us any member to the conference, so we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. 22-7-23.
Part-time release for CEA president.
Who wants to take that? I'll give it to Susan.
Sure. I guess I would like to make a motion that we create this time for the CEA president to spend time working amongst the people that she works for, our staff, unless there's more discussion that would like to take place. Like, I'm not sure if any other members had any questions or if not.
So we have a motion to approve the part-time release for the CEA president on the floor, and we'll open it up for discussion. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Don?
I'll be voting against once again. I cannot, in good conscience, approve a position to file grievances and unfair labor practices against this, so sorry. I'll vote no. Nothing personal.
Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Abstain.
I'm sorry. Mr. Wagner?
I abstain.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
No.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
May review?
Yes.
Six yes, one abstained, and one no.
Motion carries. 22-7-24.
Update on Chicopee High School fill lights.
And we'll give that to Don. Get a motion.
Motion for...
Discussion now.
Motion for an update.
Motion for the update. We don't need a motion.
Mr. Chaplin is here to give more details about it. As of right now, all that stuff is there, but we're waiting for better weather for the cranes to put up the poles, but he can give more details about it.
Hi, everyone. Scott Chaplin, Director of Maintenance, Chicopee Public Schools. The project is going well. All the underground piping is installed that's going to all the light poles. The feeders are installed from the building into the fieldhouse, which is something our staff did to save some money for the district. The one sleeve is in the ground. There's actually, the sleeves that go in the ground are 24-foot long, so they put one sleeve in the ground that the poles rest in, and then they pour concrete around that sleeve. So they have one sleeve in. All the poles are put... The hardest part of the whole thing is putting all the poles together, because the poles come in pieces. And the poles are all... All the lights are already set at the angles they're supposed to be at. So once the pole goes up, it's basically done. You just have to get the wire to it. There's no adjusting the lights and everything. It's all done by computers. So the way, when it comes from the factory, it's done by computers. So the hardest part is setting up everything, how the computer said everything should be set up. And all the poles are set, if you go there, all the poles are set up within crane distance of all the places the poles are going. I believe they're using like a 160-foot crane, so they definitely have to have a good weather day where no thunderstorms are in the mix or any kind of high winds. But it's still on schedule, and it'll be done before school starts.
Scott, if I may, how many light poles are there?
There's four light poles.
Four, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Again, we're just getting an update, so I appreciate your update. Thank you.
No problem.
22-7-25.
Update on Youth Sports Task Force.
Who's giving the update?
I guess I can give the update.
Thank you.
The task force met four times this past school year. Mr. Sean Macken was a part of the athletic director. He's looking to have the director, Parks and Recs, to take it over for the upcoming school year, because it had taken a lot of his time away from the, you know, the sports within the school. But they did do a survey, a survey of students. It was 350 students, pre-K to eighth, 165 total female students, 185 total male students, and sixth to eighth graders accounted for 205 of the 350. It was 150 responses from youth organizations, and the biggest participation is Knights of Columbus. Ajax is second with 27%. Knights of Columbus was 46%. Galaxy's 19%. Tigers Club is 9%. Amber Jacks 8%. Braves 7%. Boys and Girls Club 3%. And a lot of the other organizations, 27 other ones have less than 3% participation rate. Parks and Recs had 60 responses, with suburban basketball responding being the huge piece of 43%. Camp OP 37% responded. Skills and Drummer Drill Skills Clinic 5%. And 12 other agencies had less than 5%. The preferred sports from this survey, the Chicopee families and people wanting to see grow were swimming, girls volleyball, gymnastics, boys and girls track, boys and